Evening, and I would like to invite you to please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Item three on our agenda is roll call.
Chair Neman.
Here. Apologize. Vice Chair Avery?
Here.
Commissioner Fagasain?
Here.
Commissioner Henderson?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, we are all in attendance. Item four on our agenda is the review of the agenda, and for the first time up here, we have Ms. Sagert as the acting planning manager, so welcome to the dais.
Thank you. As I was saying earlier, it's a little bit hotter up here than I realized it would be. But it's nice to be up here, thank you. Okay, so tonight on the agenda, we do have a couple memorandums that you received prior to the meeting. One of them is for Agenda Item Seven, which is the minutes from last month's meeting. There were some minor typographical and grammatical errors that were corrected, and so that has been placed on the dais. And then you also have memorandums for Items Nine A, Nine C, and Nine D. The planners for each of those projects will go into more detail on those memorandums, but they are here for your information.
All right, thank you very much. Item five, may I please get a motion to waive the full reading of resolutions?
All second.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you, the motion carries. And Item Six, public comments on our consent calendar items and any items not on our agenda. Our consent calendar this month simply consists of approving the minutes from our prior meeting. So did we receive any e-commerce?
We did not.
All right, and is there anybody out there that wants to talk about this? All right, no public comments. Then that brings us to our consent calendar, which is the approval of the minutes from our last month's meeting with the errors corrected on them. May I get a motion on the minutes?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, the minutes from our previous meeting are approved as amended with the corrections. All right, that brings us to Item Eight, new business. We don't get new business often here, so we are excited about this. And we also get to meet Marie Richey, our Assistant City Manager. She hasn't had the pleasure of presenting to us before.
Good evening, Commissioners, my name is Marie Richey, I'm the Assistant City Manager. And I'm very excited to be here because I've never been here, but I also am excited about Measure AV for the city of Palmdale. So tonight I'm going to present some informations for you to help you make a better decision as you place your votes for November third. And my hope is that with this information, you'll have a better understanding of the city's financial position and what we're looking for towards our future. This year, the city of Palmdale adopted a budget that was less, 12% less than we did previous years in revenues. Seventy-one point seven million was our projection based on the COVID shutdowns. Expenditures were approximated at seventy-seven point one million, and the city council made the decision to go into reserves and use five point four million dollars to balance the budget. That was a really difficult decision to do instead of cutting programs and services to the community. But they knew that with COVID, that wasn't appropriate, and we still needed to provide the services that we could to them. A breakdown, this slide provides a breakdown of our revenues and expenditures. And you can see over half of the revenue that the city generates is from property taxes and sales tax. The other cost, or the other revenue is permits, licenses, and recreational services. Transfers in are things that come from other funds to help pay for general fund activities. And then there's TOT, which is the transient occupancy tax. You can see sales tax is twenty-six percent. That's a large percentage for us to rely on because when the economy dips and when it goes up, we rely heavily on that, and it can make our finances very volatile as a result. On the flip side, our expenditures are mainly made up of our county contracts, which is the L.A. County Sheriff's Department, as well as animal care and control. It's approximately thirty million dollars annually, but you can see it really pays off as we were named in the top ten percent of the safest cities in California. The other major costs are personnel and operating. And those things pay for building and safety, development services, also administration, and our recreational services. Here you can see is our general fund five-year projection. The blue bars represent the total expenditures on an annual basis, and you can see that they incrementally increase every single year. And that's because of COLAs and contracts. And also our L.A. County Sheriff's contract does increase due to liabilities in just the county. We're really relying on them for that. The yellow line represents the total revenues that we project we're going to bring in. We're anticipating some impacts to our property tax levels because of deferrals of mortgages. And so our experts, which is HGL Tax Consultants, are anticipating if there is going to be any impact, we will feel it in the next two years. And so to be conservative, we maintain that line to be pretty even across the board. The red line represents our need to utilize reserves if we continue at this path. So within two years, we would dip below our required reserve requirement, which is twenty percent of our general fund expenditures. But I assure you that the city would never let that happen. The first thing we would do is cut services and programs to ensure a balanced budget. So why sales tax? It's charged on top of a ticket price of most goods and services, so you pay it when you use it. And items that are exempt are groceries, prescriptions, medication, and other certain essential items. This provides a breakdown of the sales tax that you pay today. Currently, in the county of L.A., we pay nine point five percent in sales tax. So for example, a hundred dollar couch of that nine fifty that you would pay, six dollars would go to the state of California, two fifty would go to the county of L.A., and one dollar of that would come to the city of Palmdale. For a forty thousand dollar car, it's a little bit different. The car tax follows you anywhere you go, so all Palmdale residents would be affected by this tax. So if you were to buy it in Lancaster, you would still pay the Palmdale rate. And so at nine and a half percent, total taxes on a forty thousand dollar car are thirty-eight hundred dollars. Of that, the city of Palmdale only receives four hundred dollars. The rest goes to the state or the county. The bottom chart provides the dollar amount generated in the city of Palmdale. So the nine point five percent tax rate generates approximately a hundred and seventy-six million dollars annually. Of that hundred and seventy-six, a hundred and eleven of that goes to the state. Forty-six point two-five goes to the county of Los Angeles, and only eighteen point five percent comes to the city of Palmdale. The way the sales tax is utilized for each organization is as follows. You see the state of California, about four percent of it, or five percent, goes towards the state of California's general fund, with only one percent going to criminal justice activities and local social health programs. The county of L.A. utilizes the majority of their sales tax revenue for transportation, except Measure H. Measure H is the homeless initiative's sales tax. And for the city of Palmdale, the entire one percent goes into our general fund, which is discretionary. And that's where we use it on infrastructure, public safety, and quality of life. So the county collects a significant amount of money from the city of Palmdale. But when it comes to services and helping us provide those services to our residents, we only get twenty-three cents for every dollar that they collect. And this is really important because when you have an issue or a problem, you call the city of Palmdale. If there's a pothole, or if you need nine-one-one services, or there's a tree obstructing your view, you're calling the city of Palmdale and we're responding for it all. The county and state don't do that. You can read in the newspaper about unemployment and how a lot of our unemployed residents are having difficulties getting through to the state just to get their benefits. And so it's really important to show that we get the least amount of money, but we provide the most services to our residents. Why is this important to the budget? Because it provides for locally controlled funds that by law cannot be touched by the county or the state. It's a continued source of revenue to fund essential services in the city of Palmdale. Residents, businesses, and visitors benefit directly. And the reason why visitors are included in there is of that eighteen point five million dollars, visitors or non-residents generate about thirty-eight percent of that. So the burden is not fully on our residents. It's anybody who purchases items in the city that would pay the increased sales tax. It would also secure the future of Palmdale. So these are two headlines in the newspaper within the last few months. L.A. County with more than two billion dollars in sales tax revenue loss as a result of COVID. And then California, that which adopted a fifty-four billion dollar budget deficit. I assure you with these headlines that those agencies will come after its residents for taxes, whether it be through sales tax or property taxes, they're going to come down with those. Here is an example of L.A. County and their ability to pass tax measures. So we went back about twelve years to show all the sales tax or property tax measures that the county of L.A. put out to our voters. Of those ten, they passed almost every single one of them. And the reason why the yellow is highlighted together is because in two thousand twelve, the county brought forth Measure J. It failed with thirty-four percent. But they brought back Measure M in two thousand sixteen, four years later, and got it passed. It's the same exact tax for the same purpose. The same goes for Measure P for parks and rec. It didn't pass in two thousand fourteen, but the county brought it back in two thousand sixteen, and it passed with an overwhelming majority. Lastly, Measure FD, which was in March of two thousand twenty for fire services, failed. But I assure you, the county will be back to have something passed so that they can continue to fund the fire services. This is a chart to show you how Palmdale voters voted on these county taxes. And of those ten, you can see the city Palmdale voters passed almost every single one of them as well. The four that it didn't pass, the first one being Measure H was for a hotel tax. One for landfill, the next one was Measure H, which is the homeless tax, and I'm going to talk about that in the next couple slides. And also Measure FD, but it didn't pass by only five hundred votes. So to Palmdale, that's not very much. So here's a case study about local control and how important it is for Palmdale to have Measure AV on the ballot. In two thousand seventeen, the county put Measure H on the ballot. It's for a homeless service and prevention. It generates approximately three hundred and fifty-five million dollars annually. And Palmdale contributes four point six-two-five annually to that. Meaning people in Palmdale have bought things, and that portion of the sales tax goes to the county. Of that, we've received only a hundred and sixty thousand dollars annually. But cities like Santa Monica and Long Beach receive significant benefit from Measure H, and I'm sure you've seen on TV or have been there and seen their homeless population. They benefit greatly from the county's Measure H, but they don't pay a penny into it. And that's because they've already passed a local sales tax measure that maxed out sales tax for the state of California, so they don't have to pay for it. They get the benefit, but they don't pay. And there are over forty cities in L.A. County that have already passed a local sales tax measure. So how would this affect our consumers in Palmdale? A cup of coffee today at three fifty would increase by three cents with the sales tax measure. Lunch would increase by eleven cents. Household goods would increase by thirty-eight cents. And for groceries, there would be no impact because there's no sales tax imposed on that item. Although individual is a small amount, but over the course of a year, in the number of transaction, it will equate to approximately twelve million dollars additional for the city of Palmdale. If approved, the sales tax measure will pay for the following services: support rental mortgage assistance, upgrade emergency communications, and improve emergency preparedness, maintain nine-one-one emergency response, keeping public parks open, safe, and clean, supporting community policing, activities for at-risk youth and mental health efforts, addressing homelessness, supporting services for local military veterans, maintaining food distribution services, repairing streets and potholes, and retaining and recruiting local businesses through economic development. It's really important that we provide those services because we know that in two thousand eight, with a lot of people losing their homes, property values in Palmdale did decrease. So right now, as part of our COVID and Palmdale Cares Initiative, we are providing services like small grants to our businesses and homes because we know how important it is to keep those locations occupied. Nothing looks worse to a business or a home developer than empty storefronts or empty homes with weeds growing out in front of them. And it's important that we talk about these specifically because they are in the ballot. And we discussed an oversight committee that would be appointed by community or by the city council, made up of community members to review all expenditures prior to being adopted, approved, and implemented by the city. So it's kind of like the promises made, promises kept idea. Yes, so maintaining food distribution services not only includes saves, but also legacy commons. There's food distribution services there, but also park, keeping park, public parks open, clean, and safe, include all our facilities, so Marie Kerr, Oasis, Legacy Commons, our pools, those are all included in there as well. Did I answer your question? Well, and again, if we come down too specific, then the flexibility of addressing priorities or issues that come forward to the city limit our ability to shift the money towards those programs to help that community or that population.
But it is general fund income, correct?
Correct. It's all a general tax. It would go to general fund. However, for accounting purposes and for this measure, everything would be kept separately. So the financials would come out separately for this money specifically, and audits for this fund specifically. So this is the language on the ballot measure. It's an ordinance protecting Palmdale's long-term financial stability, maintaining essential city services, repairing streets and potholes, addressing homelessness, maintaining nine-one-one emergency response, keeping public areas safe and clean for all, retaining local businesses, protecting local water sources, maintaining veterans, seniors, mental health, and community programs by establishing a three-quarter cent tax, providing approximately twelve million annually until ended by voters, requiring citizen oversight, public spending disclosures, and all funds used locally in Palmdale to be adopted. Yes means yes, it would pass and be imposed. No means no, and it wouldn't be imposed. And we are very specific in the language because, again, accountability, transparency, and making promises that we should be keeping. And that concludes the presentation. So all committees in the city of Palmdale are opened up to the public. Everyone would fill out an application. You guys have all gone through it, actually. So same way, and then it would be appointed by, affirmed by the city council.
Oh, the city council?
Yes.
I just heard you say the mayor.
Yeah, I think the wording is the mayor appoints and the city council. Yes.
And how, what percentage of votes does this need to pass? Is it fifty-one percent or is it?
Yes, simple majority.
You were saying that if we don't pass this, the county could pass something. If we do pass this, do you believe the county is still going to put something that just won't affect us because we've already preempted it? And if that, if they do put it on, do we still vote for something that's not going to affect us for the county?
Yes and yes. So although we wouldn't, it wouldn't apply to the city of Palmdale, it's still a county-wide vote that all residents of the county would have an opportunity to have a say in. It's still a county-wide vote that all residents of the county would have an opportunity to have a say in. Um also, just to note, you had said if it doesn't pass, the county has the Olympics coming. And so they're looking for funding to improve their public infrastructure to make sure that they'll be able to handle the capacity of the Olympics as well. And so we're watching, we keep in contact and we're anticipating that they're gonna have something come within the next two years. If not sooner because of what COVID has done to a lot of agencies.
So by passing this, um you were saying that um whatever other city that was Santa Monica or whatever it was. Um there's a cap. Once our sales tax for our city hits a cap, it can no longer be raised. Would this bring us to a that cap?
Yes. The state of California cap for sales tax is ten point two five percent. In order to increase it, it would have to go to the voters of the state of California. And um what was the other? So any other taxes passed would not affect Palmdale because we will have already reached our maximum. But measure H is actually planned to sunset, I believe, in the next two years. So the county will either let it expire or they will go out to have it um renewed. So that there is no lapse because if that happens, that leaves point two five percent on the table again.
So um why is there not a sunset clause on this? I mean, isn't this particular? Um tax just to kinda offset the issues we've had with the COVID um the COVID shortfalls of revenue? And once we get beyond that and back to normal, could shouldn't there be some sort of sunset to take it back away again?
So this local sales tax measure has actually been in the works for the past year prior to COVID. A poll was conducted in January and February with over seven hundred respondents. And they said that they would prefer no sunset date for this measure. Um and with that, we we tailored the language to meet the demands of the poll that we conducted in the city. It just so happened to be prior to COVID. COVID exacerbated the situation. But definitely for the long-term fiscal sustainability of the city. This local sales tax measure is just one tool in the arsenal the city can utilize for future growth. So one thing that um we've heard before too is the city needs to be more responsible of thinking of other ways. We're not relying completely on the sales tax measure to help us. We've been out there trying to um encourage or attract businesses to come into the city. Amazon recently is a good really good example from proposal to opening. It was eight months. They um have brought through over three hundred jobs, generating fifty thousand dollar salaries for each of those jobs. Um we wanna attract development and housing into the community. We've bought gone out there and put ourselves on the list to be considered for US Space Command. So staff is looking for other ways to generate revenue in the city and not relying completely on sales tax. This is just one other way to help secure our future.
What's the city's um fiscal year dates?
July first to June thirtieth.
Cause when I feel it was a calendar, I was wondering, how did you know to budget for COVID in January?
And I will share with you, uh back in May when we did do this budget, we anticipated only closures through May. But then it was too late. The day we adopted the budget was the day the governor shut us down again. And so at the end of October, we'll be doing quarterly financial reviews and make adjustments as necessary to be more responsible. And responsive to the situation at hand. So if there needs to be reduction in revenues, we will make reductions in services. Um in alignment with that to not put us in a bad situation for the future.
You also mentioned that you dipped five million dollars into reserves. What is the total amount of reserves?
Reserves are at twenty-seven million right now.
Thank you.
Hey, do any other commissioners have questions for Ms. Ritchie at this time?
No, I just have a statement made that I wanna thank all the employees that took their forego their raises this year because of COVID. That made a huge difference. Thank you.
I'd just like to say this for I I spoke to you briefly, I think when you you first came on board. This is the first time I've heard you speak sort of officially and. I think our city is blessed to have you. You are bright and you know your stuff and very impressive. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much for that presentation. Alright. That will bring us to item nine A.
This item will be presented by Jasmine Alvarado.
Come on in. We saved the front row for you, okay? I think if her name were wearing his warrior helmet, this would not be happening.
We can probably just carry on with the verbal presentation while we're waiting for um for that to get fixed.
Are you ready, Ms. Alvarado? Okay, thank you.
So, good evening, planning commissioner. Um as Megan mentioned. As Megan mentioned, there is a memo memorandum on the dais regarding uh this item. Uh there is some language that was omitted from one of the findings in the resolution. So the applicant, uh Chalman Engineering, has submitted a request for the first three-year time extension. To previously approved tentative track map three uh seven, three, one, five, eight, which will extend the life of the map to May twenty-six. Twenty twenty-three. The project is located east of Forty Second Street East between Avenue Q and Palmdale Boulevard. Oh, you would see a picture uh of the site looking from um south from Avenue Q. And also. Uh so the track map allows for the subdivision of approximately thirty-nine acres. Um into a hundred and two single-family residential lots, including one detention basin on two lots. All lots meet the minimum lot width, depth and area requirements per Palmdale municipal code. The project pro proposes uh direct access to the development uh residential development from Avenue Q. At Forty Second Street East. Uh three additional points of access are provided from the existing residential uh development to the west. Uh of the site via Ti-Tiram Mia Way, Bolton Avenue and also um Finnville Avenue. Two new access points are provided to connect the uh to future development to the west. Uh so tonight, the planning commission has the following options. Um option one is to adopt the resolution approving tentative track map seven, three, one, five, eight, time extension number one, as amended. Oh, sorry.
Those are the. Don't go three too fast. You spent a lot of time on this.
There's the purple zone. And then we have the site from the south. In the north of Palmdale Boulevard. And then here are the options. Um so option one is to amend as um adopt as amended. Option two would be to continue the project. Option three is to deny the project. Option one is recommended. And that concludes my presentation and I'm available for any questions.
Alright, thank you very much, Ms. Alvarado. Do any of our commissioners have technical questions for staff at this time? Alright, if there are none, then I would like to open the public hearing on this item. Starting off with, did you receive any ecomments on this item?
We did not.
We did not, okay. And the public hearing is open. Is there anybody here to speak on this item? And if so, you have three minutes to speak. You can step forward and state your name. Don't fight over it.
Good evening. My name is Brett Harper and I'm the owner of the property. So I'm here with Bill Chalman. He's the engineer on the property. And uh we would graciously ask that you would extend the track map three years. Um we have some great development plans in mind to improve the city. And um we're really excited about the opportunity to improve the city, improve housing. Uh we have exciting plans to uh build single-family homes that will greatly improve the area. And also with the commercial piece, um Circle K is coming in. You know, down the street, there's great retailers across the street with Target, Home Depot, uh Starbucks. So we can see this community really thriving uh with the traffic circle and. Um I think it's gonna be a great development, so thank you for your time. That's all I have to say for now.
Alright, one moment. Do any commissioners have any questions for the property owner?
You didn't have a uh did you have a sample of the kind of homes that you would be building?
Um yes, I believe we we have some samples. Uh Bill, the engineer, I believe he has one in his office. But I could provide that uh via email. I don't have it on me right now, but.
Could he submit that at a later date for us to look at? Is that possible?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just would like to.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, folks.
Alright. Alright, is there anybody else here to speak on that item? Alright, then if there is no objection, I shall close the public hearing on this item. And open it up for commissioner discussion. Any discussion on the item? And if there is.
I move to adopt uh option one as amended.
I'll second.
Maybe we will, maybe we will. Are we not doing touchscreen now? Is it different? Am I the only one? No, we don't have touchscreen.
No, I don't have touchscreen either.
It's not. Mine isn't. I can touch it. Sometimes you have to go, nice computer. Alright, so we have a motion from Commissioner Avery and a second. From Commissioner Frogasains. Is there any discussion on the motion? Alright, then we shall call for the question using our touchscreens. And let the record reflect that the motion passes with five yes votes. Thank you very much for coming out this evening and we appreciate your time. Thank you, you too. Alright. That will bring us to item nine B.
This one will be presented by Ben Fiss.
Thank you, good evening. Alright, the next item up is zoning ordinance amendment Z O A twenty zero zero four. The proposed zoning ornament ordinance amendment would amend various sections of the zoning code. Primarily to streamline how the code's used, clarify and eliminate ambiguity and ensure consistency throughout the process. Uh throughout the code, I should say. By way of background, uh this zoning ordinance amendment is intended to improve the organization, consistency and flow of the document. And also to uh address the evolving nature of land use and development. Things change over time and we need to keep up with those changes. I think you'll be excited about some of the changes that are proposed. The land use matrix, which is found in PMC section seventeen seventy-six, provides users with a comprehensive list of allowable uses. And the associated zones in which those uses are permitted, along with the appropriate entitlements necessary uh to. Have that use approved. It's important for us to revisit this list periodically in order to add new uses and sometimes reclassify existing uses. Uh as businesses uh and business types evolve over time. Some of the uses proposed in this amendment include escape rooms, rock climbing gyms, spinning classes. And paintball courses. Corrections to the wording of various sections or uh of the code are also necessary in order to rectify some inconsistencies and omissions. Uh for example, the size of standard uh two-car garages was listed in one place in the code as twenty feet by twenty-two. And in another section by as twenty feet by twenty feet. Um we also had a an omission in the code where sign regulations that were intended to be included in the R four zone were. Were just left off of that zone and also the uh mixed-use zone. Earlier, I spoke about the land use matrix. The mixed-use zone was only included in the commercial section of the land use matrix. And we needed to add it as well to the residential uh section of land use matrix. So there are some minor corrections and omissions. Uh there are also clarifications. Uh which serve to ensure consistency and certainty for the development community and staff as well as members of the public. Um things like equating retail sales of automobile parts and accessories with similar retail uses. Rather than uh being lumped in with automotive uses. Clarifying that exemptions from submittal of a major modification. Triggers submittal of a minor modification and it doesn't just exempt you from entitlements altogether. And also clarification that uh of the appeals process for applications which are reviewed by the hearing officer. The proposed changes in regulation are generally part of refining and modernizing the zoning code to bring it more in line with best planning practices. The zoning ordinance amendment proposes creating uh aesthetic and safety requirements for security roll-down shutters. Restricting the height of retaining walls and perimeter walls when there's a great difference on properties. Clarifying required parking for drive-through restaurants to better reflect parking demand. And amending setbacks along arterial and collector streets to ensure better design and unified landscaping. The proposed Z O A is consistent with goals, objectives and policies of the general plan. And for these reasons, option one is recommended. Uh we recommend the adoption of the resolution. This concludes the presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fifth. Do any of the commissioners have technical questions for staff at this time? Alright, if there are none, then I would like to open the public hearing on this item. Ms. Taggert, did you receive any ecomments?
We did not.
Alright. And is there anybody here to speak on this item? Alright, then if there is no objection, I shall close the public hearing on this item. Any commissioner discussion? And if there is none, may I get a motion? Yes.
My apologies if I may interrupt. We did uh receive two comments uh on the environmental document after the.
Oh.
Nope. Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, good, cause they're too late, cause I closed my public hearing, so I'm sorry. We got a lot going on, right?
I'm sorry.
In that case, I move to adopt option one. In that case, I move to adopt option one.
A second.
Whoever pushes the button first gets a second. Go for it.
You can.
She did.
Oh, you did it already?
All right, let the record reflect that we have a motion from Commissioner Avery and a second from Commissioner Frogasains. Is there any discussion on the motion? All right, then we shall call for the question using our touchscreens. Let the record reflect that the motion passes with five yes votes. Thank you very much, Mr. Fiss.
Thank you.
All right, that will bring us to item nine C.
And this one will also be presented by Ben Fiss.
Thank you. The next project is North County Intelligent Transportation System, Palmdale Extension Project. And now you'll understand why I was mixed up. We did receive a couple of environmental comments after the circulation of the environmental document period had closed. One was from the Los Angeles County Fire Department and the other was from the Los Angeles County Department of Sanitation, both requesting consultation prior to building permits. Those comments did not trigger any need for modification to the environmental document. The proposed project is located, at least the construction area, is located on Avenue R between Fortieth Street East and Seventieth Street East and along Avenue S between Fifty-Fifth Street East and Sixtieth Street East. The following construction work is proposed. The extension of fiber optic cable, fiber optic lines along Avenue R between Fortieth Street East and Seventieth Street East and along Avenue S between Fifty-Fifth Street East and Sixtieth Street East. The installation of three new traffic signals at intersections that currently do not have traffic signals, Avenue R and Sixty-Fifth Street East, Avenue R and Seventieth Street East, and Avenue S and Sixtieth Street East. As well as the installation of closed caption television, traffic surveillance cameras, basically, along Avenue R at Sixtieth Street East, Avenue R at Rocky Lane, Avenue R at Sixty-Fifth Street East, Avenue R at Seventieth Street East, and Avenue S at Sixtieth Street East. Lastly, these projects may require the acquisition of some right-of-way in order to construct street improvements necessary to accommodate the new traffic signals at intersections of Avenue R and Sixty-Fifth Street East, Avenue R and Seventieth Street East, and Avenue S and Sixtieth Street East. The acquisition of right-of-ways generally, things like curb returns and disabled accessibility. The applicant in this case is the City of Palmdale, Department of Public Works. They request that the planning commission adopt a finding that the acquisition of land associated with the project is consistent with the goals, policies, and objectives of the general plan and the adoption of the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program prepared for this project. Pursuant to CEQA, an initial study to determine whether the project would have a significant effect on the environment has been prepared for the proposed project. An MND and MMRP were prepared and circulated in accordance with CEQA guidelines. And once again, the planning commission has the following options to adopt the resolution. As proposed, continue the item and direct staff to return with additional information or deny the project. Option one is recommended. This concludes our presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fiss.
Thank you.
Do any commissioners have technical questions for staff at this time? I just have a question. I'm not totally familiar with right-of-way acquisitions. How many pieces of property and how many people are we dealing with in this right-of-way acquisition in these areas?
The right-of-way acquisitions at three intersections, and I believe it's proposed to only impact three particular properties within those three intersections. So, it's not every corner of each of the three.
It's just the three that would be affected, okay.
Yeah, in some cases, they have enough actual right-of-way. And let me see here, I'm looking over at Ulysses from the Department of Public Works. Is that accurate?
Yes, and they are all vacant.
Okay, thank you. All right. All right, there are no more technical questions and I shall open the public hearing on this item. Did we receive any heat comments?
We did not.
All right. And is there anybody here to speak on this item? I guess not. All right, then if there is no objection, I will close the public hearing on this item and open it for commissioner discussion. Any discussion? If there is no discussion, then please get a motion.
Move to adopt option one as recommended.
All right, we have a motion.
I'll second it.
We have a motion from Commissioner Smith and a second from Commissioner Avery. Any discussion on the motion? All right, then let us call for the question. And let the record reflect that the motion passes with five yes votes. You may now go home, Ulysses. I'm just kidding. Thank you very much for being here. And that will bring us to item nine D. Thank you, Mr. Fiss. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
What did I do? That's okay, that's okay. I'm back. We're back. Sorry. Sanitizing. Good evening, everyone, again. So, there is a memorandum on the dais for this item as well. There was a finding that was inadvertently left out and so it's been, now it will be included back into the resolution. So, the proposed project involves creation of a specific plan referred to as the Palmdale Transit Area Specific Plan, or P T A S P, that customizes the planning process, land use, and zoning regulations for future transit-oriented development. Transit-oriented development is development which involves the creation of vibrant, walkable, pedestrian-oriented, mixed-use communities centered around train systems. The specific plan creates a foundation for, excuse me, this type of development surrounding the existing Palmdale Transportation Center and future multimodal high-speed rail station. The specific plan document is a tool to be used by developers, property owners, city staff, and decision-makers. And it provides policies and a vision for form-based development and design standards, suggested infrastructure improvements and economic development strategies, and it's intended to maximize development potential around the future station. The specific plan includes about seven hundred and forty-six acres and is generally bound by Technology Drive to the north, Tenth Place east, excuse me, State Route fourteen to the west, Avenue Q nine to the south, and Tenth Place east to the east. The future arrival of the California High-Speed Rail system, including a multimodal rail station near the existing Palmdale Transportation Center, will really transform the way residents live, work, and play. The planning for the arrival of the high-speed rail system began more than twenty years ago and it continues on in anticipation of the system's arrival. The city has been studying transit-oriented development and has completed two planning studies in preparation for the future station, which would be the Avenue Q feasibility study and the transit-oriented development land use framework plan. The Avenue Q feasibility studies studied the western corridor into the future multimodal high-speed rail station. And then the land use framework plan created the foundation for all future development within the planned area, including this proposed specific plan. A third study is currently underway and it will evaluate a complete street design along Avenue Q from Twentieth Street East to Sierra Highway. The proposed project was facilitated through a grant, which was funded by the California High-Speed Rail Authority. And the draft P T A S P has been created in collaboration with California High-Speed Rail Authority stakeholders and the community. Given the new concepts envisioned by the P T A S P, the staff recognized the need to create a comprehensive outreach strategy to ensure as much input was received as possible. Some of the engagement activities have included stakeholder interviews with representatives from various agencies, industries, property owners, and schools such as the Aerospace Academy, mobile workshops, online surveys, and public workshops, which were held at Yucca Elementary and City Hall. A technical working group was also created and it consisted of representatives from a broad cross-section of the community. And they held eight meetings over the course of a three-year period. Some of the key comments received included concern for increases in property values, avoidance of gentrification and displacement, and the need to ensure safety in the area. The team also received input from the development community and they indicated that the specific plan should use form-based coding and that the city processes should be streamlined. The P T A S P area contains sixteen hundred parcels with a wide range of existing land use designations and zones. The predominant land use designation and zone is single-family residential with multiple family developments located immediately south of the existing Palmdale Transportation Center and along Tenth Street East. The existing land use designations and zone also provide concentrations of commercial land uses along Palmdale Boulevard and Sixth Street East with industrial uses to the northeast and west of the existing Palmdale Transportation Center. The existing designations and zone also include pre-zoning designations for two unincorporated Los Angeles County areas that are within the City of Palmdale's sphere of influence. And this slide shows the existing zoning designations. In order to accommodate the P T A S P, the general plan amendment proposes to revise land use designations within the specific plan area to SP Palmdale Transit Area. In addition, eighty-seven acres surrounding the existing Palmdale Transportation Center is currently within the Palmdale Transit Village specific plan. So, the general plan amendment proposes to repeal that specific plan in accordance with California Government Code. And then the project also includes a request to change the zone within the specific plan area to SP specific, excuse me, SP Palmdale Transit Area. And both the general plan and zone change propose to incorporate the existing unincorporated areas into the P T A S P, which are within the city's existing sphere of influence. And the P T A S P will provide designations and pre-zones for these areas to accommodate future annexation into the city. The project also includes a request to amend the eastern boundary of the Palmdale Trade and Commerce Center specific plan to remove the portion of the plan which is bound by Technology Drive, Division Street, Palmdale Boulevard, and State Route fourteen. So, as proposed, this area would be incorporated into the P T A S P and would be governed by the regulations specified within the P T A S P. And the future development in this area would support the higher density and intensity of developments that are envisioned by this specific plan located to the east. The proposed specific plan outlines area-specific designations, development standards, design guidelines, and methods for implementation. And it provides future developers with flexibility while still ensuring cohesive development within the planned area. Due to the unique character that's envisioned by the specific plan, creation of traditional zoning for, or traditional zoning map for the P T A S P would not have achieved the desired result. So, because of this, a regulating plan was created to control the design and placement of new development in a manner that addresses the size and mass of buildings in relation to one another. The uses proposed by the regulating plan are outlined in the table on this slide. The specific plan creates a ringed pattern with the highest intensity of uses located closest to the core of the plan surrounding the future rail station. And then a couple of things to note here are that the traditional neighborhood designation is intended to preserve existing single-family neighborhoods. And the regional, commercial, and business mix designations are located closest to State Route fourteen and are intended to support the more intense development within the specific plan area to the east of that location. In addition to a unique set of designations, the P T A S P is an ideal site for form-based code. Form-based code includes land development standards that replace traditional use-based zoning. And it uses physical form rather than the separation of uses as the organizing principle. So, the intent of form-based codes are to allow easily predictable development results and then enhance the public realm because the physical form of future development is specifically dictated by those development standards. Here is a great, on the site is a great representation of what you could possibly get with conventional zoning, which is, and what the intention of form-based coding would be for this type of specific plan. Form-based codes really focus less on the type of the activity taking place inside the building and more on the overall form and character of the neighborhood that that building is in. So, while the use is still regulated, more emphasis is really placed on the location and the form of the buildings, the character of the street frontage, and then the relationship between that building and the public spaces around it. In general, some of the more notable differences between the Palmdale Municipal Code and the proposed specific plan are reduced building setbacks, increased building height, reduced common and private open space, the inclusion of common open space requirements for non-residential development, and reduced parking. In addition to development standards, the specific plan provides guidelines for a cohesive design and compatible architecture with specific requirements for massing, articulation, with allowed colors and materials as shown in the examples on this slide. I almost spaced them perfectly for you in the screens there. I did that on purpose. The specific plan also creates active streetscapes. And these streetscapes are intended to accommodate multiple modes of travel and to ensure comfortable and safe environment for pedestrians, bicyclists, vehicles, and various other modes of transportation. So, in addition to reimagining the configuration and usability of the streets within the specific plan area, the specific plan also revises the street pattern. And one of the more prominent examples of this would be the removal of Sixth Street East to accommodate the future rail alignment. In an effort to support development in certain locations and in certain densities, the specific plan offers incentives to attract developers. So, the plan establishes minimum densities in three of the zoning districts to ensure that properties, specifically those that are currently vacant or underutilized, develop at desired densities that leverage the presence of the anticipated transit opportunities. The specific plan also proposes making public space improvements in the areas around the future multimodal high-speed rail station to enhance the community, create a downtown vibrancy, and attract potential development to these specific areas. Other incentives may include reductions in parking requirements, development fee and park fee waivers, and then assistance with lot consolidation. The economic development analysis conducted for the P T A S P consists of three major components. The first would be the Economic Development Plan Case Studies. The second is the High-Speed Rail Station Area Plan Value Capture Memo. And then the third is the Demand Projections and Implementation Strategy. The case studies are considered an informing document to the P T A S P and provide best practices and lessons learned from other similar projects throughout the United States and internationally. And then the demand projections and the value capture memo contain demand projections for four key markets, which are office, residential, retail, and hospitality. And then it also includes strategies to generate potential revenue from the build-out of the specific plan. So, with that, you have a couple of options. The first would be to adopt the resolution as amended, or excuse me. Yes, adopt the resolution as amended, continue the item or deny the project. And then option one is recommended. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Taggert. Do any commissioners... Do any commissioners have technical questions for staff at this time? Ms. Taggart, I do have one question. I know that the airport property isn't involved in this, but is there a plan to have, I mean, assuming the airport becomes viable and flies planes, is there a plan to have some kind of transit to head over in that direction for people? Or is that not part of this idea?
Sure, one of the things I did not mention is that we do have our consultants on the phone. So I'm gonna go ahead and have Roland field that question for me.
All right, thank you. Hi, Roland.
Yes, hi, everybody. I'm Paul Benedict-Luze Parsons. I'm the, I'm project manager for the consulting team that worked on this project. And yes, we do have a identified public transit option in the PTA SD that would initially run along Avenue Q and have an option to connect up to the airport should that become viable. It is, it is, it is non-mode specific. So it could be a rubber tire type of trolley. It could be a speed car. It could ultimately be taking on some other form of rapid transit system. But it is, it is identified as a viable option in the, in the PTA SD.
Okay, thank you very much. Does anybody else have questions for the consultant or staff? Okay. Then at this time, I would like to open the public hearing on this item. And did we receive any ecomments?
We did.
Yay.
We received one ecomment from a guest user, and the stance was neutral. And the comment reads, "I am Hunt Braley with the law firm of Poole, Shaferi, and Kogle. We represent Rick Sebo, who owns the property located at 38820 Third Street East, Palmdale. In 2017, we successfully processed an entitlement from Mr. Sebo to allow him to file for a CUP for the continued use of his property as industrial, as a pre-existing, non-conforming use, even though the industrial use had lapsed for more than six months. We request that the same provision be allowed in the new transit specific plan."
Okay, thank you very much. And is there anybody here to speak on this item? All right, then if there is no objection, I will close the public hearing on this item and open it up for Commissioner Discussion. I would like to say this has been a long time coming, and I am glad that Mr. Behan is here. I know you've worked really hard on this, and I got to, I attended a couple of the public information. Put your post-it note here and your sticky dot there, and I want to say the amount of outreach that's gone on this is pretty significant, and it's nice to see a lot of the ideas that the community had being implemented in this, so. I know it encompasses an awful lot, and I know there's a lot of change in it and everything, but I do believe that it's a very thorough, well-fought-out plan that the sucked-up six years of your life served, so thank you for that.
Well done, well done. I agree with the chair. I saw the long, the hard work that you guys put in, and I think I attended one or two of them. So, very productive, a lot of information, very detailed, and I like the samples and your pictures. They're awesome.
All right, any other discussion comments? All right, then might somebody make a motion on this?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt option one, as recommended, and as, yes, as well as amended.
All right. Using your touchscreen to decide motion. Thank you.
What second, ma'am?
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Smith and a second from Commissioner Henderson, as amended. Any discussion on the motion? All right, then we shall call for the question. Let the record reflect that the motion passes with five yes votes, so this will move on to the City Council. So, thank you very much. That brings us to item 10, Staff Communications. Ms. Taggart, you're back up here.
I'm a girl. So before the meeting, you received a memorandum as well for upcoming items on the next agenda. We have a couple of time, or many time extensions, all-time extensions.
All right. Mr. Doran?
Thank you. Some time ago, the commission received some training on the Brown Act and the impacts of social media on the Brown Act.
Were we in trouble?
No, no, there's actually some, some good news out of Sacramento. There was a recent bill that was passed that provided some more clarification on social media and the Brown Act, and it allowed certain comments by planning commissioners and city council members. And I will be updating my previous training, and I will be providing that to the planning commission, you know, to whoever wants to take that. So that'll be forthcoming, and that's my only comment. Good to see everybody.
Thank you very much. That's good news, then. All right, that will bring us to item 11, Planning Commission Communications. Some words of wisdom, thoughts, hums. All right, we are quiet this evening. Then I shall adjourn this to our regular Planning Commission meeting of Thursday, November 12th at 7:00 PM. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Drop the mic.